Good evening, everyone. It's October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, and this is the scheduled Town of Dartmouth Planning Board meeting. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. Also note that the Planning Board voted in public meeting to continue meeting virtually in accordance with the Governor's two thousand and twenty-five extension of the virtual slash hybrid open meeting option through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. Roll call. Begin this, please. Margaret Sweet?
Here.
Kevin Estes?
Here.
Hill Yarosa?
Here.
Lori Miller?
Yeah.
Nick Cyclepatis here. Good evening, everyone. We're going to need a motion, I believe, to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Lori Miller, seconded by Hill Yarosa, to open tonight's public hearing. Lori Miller?
Yes.
Hill Yarosa?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis, yes. It brings us to agenda item number one under the public hearing known as the definitive subdivision hereby called Linda Estates PDSP dash twenty-five dash one, also known as Zero White Oak Run in our packet. I will let Dan begin, and then we can get involved.
Mr. Chairman, first, I would recommend asking for a motion to waive the reading of the legal ad.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Lori Miller to waive the reading of the legal ad, seconded by Margaret Sweet. Lori Miller?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Hill Yarosa?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis, yes. Thank you, Dan.
Yep. As you said, this is an application for definitive subdivision contemplated as Linda Estates. It's filed on the portal application PDSP twenty-five dash one. This is on White Oak Run, also known as Assessors Map thirty-one, Lot sixteen dash four. The applicant is proposing a one-lot subdivision on a approximate three-point-four-three acre tract of land. This subdivision as proposed is for the sole purpose of, sorry, excuse me, creating the required frontage needed for a single buildable lot. This law is located in a single residence B zoning district. There's a small portion of the rear of the property that's located in a Zone Three Aquifer District. This proposed road is being constructed as a private residential lane. It meets the requirements of the thirty-foot layout with a twelve-foot pavement width. The applicant is seeking for waivers. I can leave that to the applicant if you'd like to discuss those. And the road lane is currently listed as proposed Linda Lane. This lot was recreated as a part of an A and R plan back in two thousand and two. Originally, this parcel was labeled as Parcel A because at the time it didn't have the required frontage to be considered a buildable lot. Hence why the applicant is before the board right now for a Form C subdivision plane, plan. One thing which I know I had discussed with the applicant, consideration should be given to the proposed name of the private lane as it's very similar to another name in town, Linden Lane. So I would ask the applicant or the engineer to speak on that. The planning staff had reviewed the original submittal. We had a handful of comments. The applicant addressed those. There's a few outstanding items, including that name. But I think this time would be appropriate to turn it over to the applicant's representative for his take on his application.
Dan, thank you so much. Who is here on behalf of the applicant?
Jamie Bessonette with Zenith Consulting Engineers.
Good evening, Jamie. Good to see you. Would you like to take a moment now and represent what you're proposing?
Sure, that'd be great. Do you mind if I share my screen?
Please do. DCTV, if we need you, please do. Is it restricting you?
Yes, so far it's restricted.
Are you able to click, this is DCTV, Jamie. Are you able to click Share in the bottom center, that green button there?
I am.
It should give us a request to approve, so give that a try. Let me know how that works.
All right. Yeah, it's coming up saying Host Disabled Participant Screen Sharing.
All right, let me make you co-host temporarily. Should be able to now.
Got it. Thank you. All right, can everyone see?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me zoom out just a little. All right, here we go. All right, so Dan, thanks for the introduction. Dan went over the majority of the information here. This is an existing parcel. It's got roughly fifty feet of frontage and over three acres of land. You can see that there's a small wetland section to the rear. The wetland was delineated by the Dartmouth Conservation Commission. And this is the approximate limit of the Zone Three Aquifer Protection District. I believe originally there may have been some thought to future development here. There's a radius that was kept easement-wise, access easement in the front corner that was shown on one of the recorded plans. But for this application with this definitive, we're not looking to utilize that. Overall, the lot topography flows from the road back down. There's a little bit that will come down this way, and then the rest of it is coming down and continuing to the wetland piece back here. The site does have stone walls. There'll be a couple of stone walls here that will need some small alterations to them. I'll get into that in a little bit. And there's also some stone walls that wrap on the property corners themselves and property lines. This is the definitive plan. It's pretty simple. It's a thirty-foot wide proposed private right-of-way for one lot. The dimensions are eighty-five feet up with a little bit over thirty feet in the back and eighty-five feet back. That creates the required frontage for the lot itself. Besides that, we exceed the area requirements and upland area requirements as well. We have a table up here showing the requirements that we need to meet and how we meet them. We did just close up with the Board of Health. They had a meeting at six o'clock tonight. They're going to be issuing a letter. But they did, they looked and reviewed this note, and they are going to be requiring us to keep that note basically stating that without them having approved a well or a septic design yet, they would need to sign off on this to be a buildable lot prior to us considering it a buildable lot. This is really the engineering portion of the plan. This is the layout of the proposed driveway or roadway. Essentially, we have a three percent grade in the beginning that goes down to about a one-point-five percent grade change here, very flat. We're picking up the drainage with a cross-country type grass swale that pitches to the back and will be probably expanded upon when we propose a house out back here that will have to go through review by Chris Micho and, I believe, by Paul Duarte. This area here is the reconstruction of the stone wall. We're picking up where a stone wall ends, and we're proposing it on the property line. These two sections of wall that are being removed for the access in the swale will be relocated here in accordance with town requirements. We're proposing bounds at the four corners of the proposed right-of-way. As required in the Planning Board regulations, the paved area will be twelve feet in width with four-foot shoulders on each side. And the old right-of-way itself is thirty feet in width. We do have a couple of items that still need to be addressed. One of them, we wanted to talk with the board about tonight, which is the name. Dan had mentioned that. And then just a couple of other small things that were picked up in review by DPW or Mr. Giosa that we'll be addressing in the next set of revisions. We understand the conflict with Linda Lane. I don't believe that the applicant is really set with that. He actually proposed an alternative name of Alexis Way. A-L-E-X-A-S Way. I took a look through the street listing on the assessors today. This evening, there doesn't appear to be anything even close to it, but if Dan or the board can take a look at that and let me know if they're comfortable with that that name with no conflicts, we'd be happy to change it to that. Besides that, I did want to talk really quick about the waivers. We do have four waivers that we're requesting. One is from Section three-point-three-oh-three K, which is the waiver of a request for a turnaround. One is three-point-three-zero-four A, which is the requirement of curbing. One is three-point-three-zero-seven A, which is the requirement of street trees. And the last one is three-point-three-one-oh, which is the waiver of drainage requirements. We still do have to do basic drainage requirements, but while this is just a one-lot with a tiny roadway, which is essentially equivalent to most people's driveways, we're hoping that we can get a waiver from having to put in catch basins and large drainage basins as well. With that, I think I've addressed the majority of this project, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jamie.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Has the fire department looked at this?
Yes, the fire department signed off on the portal.
They signed off on the portal?
Yes.
And so
No comments.
No comments? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I'm a little concerned about the drainage requirements. We need to make sure that there's no runoff on the budding properties.
So may I address that?
Please, Jamie.
So that was actually one of the comments that Paul had mentioned. He wants some quick calculations regarding the swale to ensure that abutters will not be affected by this. So between now and the next hearing, I believe we'll have a letter of good standing with Paul stating that that's been addressed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, could I just follow up on that real quick?
Please.
We also, through the DPW and the planning staff, also requested a just a statement that we normally do for small subdivisions like this. Just a certification that the property in ways will not be adversely affecting due to whatever the drainage proposed, and that was added to the plan. So this will be signed and stamped by the engineer that this will not cause any off-site adverse activities. In regards to the waivers, that's a general waiver we've given in the past for these one-lot subdivisions. The DPW asked for a different kind of calculation. The normal, you know, big reports you see for subdivisions, those are done for more large-scale projects. As you can see, this is a twelve-foot wide by thirty-foot length road, so those calculations aren't meant for that small an alteration. So that's, Mr. Bessonette mentioned the DPW looking for another calculation, so we are looking forward to seeing that come in so that that could address that. The waiver for the requirement of turnaround, the subdivision is allowed for a seventy-five feet without even needing a waiver. It's just that extra ten feet. You need eighty-five feet to be able to get the required frontage, so I'm not sure why seventy-five was the original limit because in order to get the frontage, you need to create the lot, you need eighty-five feet. And like I said, the others were conventionally done. For these type of subdivisions, as far as the street trees, that's something that's up to the board. Usually for roads less than fifty feet, they didn't require it because you need trees every fifty feet. I'm not sure what's out there from a tree standpoint right now. If you need to be cutting trees, just to plant trees. So I would just ask Mr. Bessonette to comment on that, on that waiver request and with that information. That's all I have for those waiver requests.
Thank you, Dan. Jamie, do you want to share? Any chance you have any screenshots or perhaps next time screenshots of what's there now, of what's being cut versus what's being kept?
Sure, it's my understanding from looking at the aerials of the site is that it's a relatively wooded site. I don't think we'd be looking to clearcut the entire site. We'd be looking for relatively minimum disturbance to provide some privacy. But the driveway and the swale will entail some cutting. So essentially, yes, I can add on the plan a limit of cutting so that the board has a better idea as to whether street trees would be warranted or not.
Appreciate that, Jamie. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Please.
And this is maybe directed towards Dan for some guidance here. We can see what is being proposed to establish the two-hundred-foot frontage, right? We're carving out a piece of the site to legally create the two-hundred-foot frontage. I guess my question, is this standard practice that this board can safely act on, that this is a legitimate design practice and not just circumventing the frontage requirement?
Off the top of my head, I can think of three that we've done very similar to this. So I could show you those plans that we had done these prior. It's kind of a weird situation where it's not a buildable lot because you don't have the frontage, but you also don't have the area for an estate lot. So you need to create frontage. The only way to create frontage is to design a subdivision road. Our regulations allow a one-lot subdivision thirty-foot wide with a twelve-foot traveled way, so that's in our regulations.
Dan, Hill Yarosa, you good? I appreciate that.
Yes, yes, for now, for now.
So Jamie, bear with me because you wouldn't expect perhaps a board member or a chair to have the following question, but I do. Dan, is there language that defines what frontage is? And is there equal language that defines an instrument by which one could create frontage?
Yes, there are definitions. We also ran them by the zoning enforcement officer to make sure that this plan would be in compliance with that, so that has been done. What was the second question?
No, no, if you ran it by the zoning, if you ran it by him, then I'm sure we're good. I want to make sure I just want to be certain that this is a standard of practice and well-defined and such that we are not entertaining an instrument that's going to be manipulated and used instead of precedent that's going to put us in trouble when we have to make different decisions moving forward after we make this decision. I'm just not thinking about tonight. I'm thinking about two weeks from now and two years from now, that's all, so.
Yeah, a couple, I think the last one we did was called Lila Bell. Don't quote me exact on that. That was off Hicksville Road. I don't know if any board members remember that one. That was a Hicksville one-lot subdivision. That was only a few years ago. It was Bush Gardens on Bush Street right near the cemetery. That was a similar one that was done. That was for one lot. There's one right across from Friends Academy. I don't remember the name of that one, but those are three I can think of off the top of my head that were one-lot subdivisions.
I'll tell you, and the reason, one of the reasons why I'm asking is there's something about this that I don't like, and it's not about the proposal or Jamie's work today. It's about what was written in two thousand and two and the implication that it may have to an abutter or someone that goes out and buys a lot and builds a home. Clearly, we knew at that time in the absence of frontage that Parcel A was not a buildable lot. But perhaps that statement on MyLard should be extended, it should be redefined and to include that Parcel A is not buildable until frontage or some statement is obtained or created. Because you don't know how the abutters saw that property and/or their land and/or those tracts when they made a decision and they decided where to put their foundations and so on. So it's just a learning curve for me and just a comment moving forward, but any other questions from anyone?
You guys in the butter?
Sure, give me just a moment. From the Planning Board, anybody else?
Yes, I have another question.
Go ahead, Margaret, please.
Okay, the road, Linden Way or whatever it's going to be called, how far back does it go on this plan? How far, how far back?
The right-of-way itself?
Yeah, the driveway.
It'll go back eighty-five feet.
So where are they going to put the house?
The house will be back several, probably several hundred feet.
Here's my question to you. What about the fire department? How are they going to get back to that if there's no road down there? There's no gravel road for a fire department. How are they going to get back to that house?
There'll be a driveway.
Yeah, but a driveway doesn't hold. Listen, it happened to me, so I know. Okay, a driveway does not hold two fire trucks coming down. It's just not built to hold that. A road is built to hold fire engines, okay? That's my question to you. You put the house way back there, and God forbid, there's a fire. How is that fire truck going to get back to that house?
As the fire, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may through you?
Please.
Talking to one of the fire chiefs, he said they view this as any other driveway. If it was a house that's set back three, four hundred feet off the road, they view this the same way. That's the explanation they gave me.
Jeez.
It's basically, it's a driveway. That's what it is. You could have a driveway six, seven, eight hundred feet back off the road. You can't require them to build it to a road standard.
Well. I just get nervous about that. That's all.
Jamie and Margaret, oh, yeah, once, sorry, go ahead, Lori.
I can say that in the past, these have been approved by the Planning Board because there are lots where you just don't have the frontage and our standards allow them to put in a, it's basically a driveway, but they have to build a certain percentage of it to a road, to a standard of a road. So this isn't something new. We're not setting a precedent. It's something that's been approved in the past. I think there is some off of Rocket Dundee Road. I believe there were some approved there. I'm trying to think. There was some off of, I think there may have been one off of Hicksville Road. So we do have them, and it is a standard practice. It's just a question of how many feet they have to build the road, and then the rest of it is built as a driveway.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, Kevin, go ahead.
Excuse me. I respect, you know, the knowledge and experience that we have on this board. One of the things that I try to, you know, gain the advice and the tenure, but my main question here is not even so much, have we done it in the past? Is it compliant with the rules today? If it's compliant with the rules today, and what I'm hearing from our planner is that the zoning officer has said this is fully compliant, then it's fine. I just want to make a distinction between a current decision of compliance as opposed to we've done it in the past. Because we've had decisions recently that, well, we did it in the past, but then we actually, you know, once we pulled the actual verbiage out, that wasn't, may not have been the right thing to do in the past. So I just want to make that distinction. I'm going to come to the same conclusion. But I do want to make that distinction.
Much appreciated, Kevin. Margaret, were you about to say something before Kevin or no?
No, no.
So Jamie, so we see what's eighty-five feet in depth, creating the frontage, and in Margaret's defense, we do not know where within this hundred, some odd thousand square feet, the house is going to be exactly. We know big picture where it's going to be, but not exactly. At what point do you, the proposer, propose further as to what surface is going to be used to extend the lane to fulfill Margaret's concern of fire equipment? I mean, can you make a comment now? Is it something that's been discussed? Or after that eighty-five feet of frontage being created, no further materials have been discussed to get from there to the house?
Well, the developer, Ben Reese, is with us. I can ask if he can speak to that?
Yeah, I think that would be great. And then, Mr. Trebel, I know you're there and you're listening. You'll have a chance, I promise. Just bear with us.
Problem. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening.
So he's there with us? There we go, sorry.
Yes. Good evening. No, no concrete plans on where exactly a house would go. But the only thing I can think of is that the fire chief would have to sign off on the final certificate of occupancy on the house, so he would ultimately have to be satisfied with the footprint of the house and the access to the structure from White Oak Run, you know, before ultimately giving a sign. So he would be involved right up to the end.
Sure. Much appreciated. Does anybody have any questions for Ben? If not, and we, the board, don't have any further questions, I think the time has come that we should ask the abutters of them who would like to speak, and I know Mr. Will Trebel mentioned he'd like to speak, so can we give the floor to him at this point in time? Go ahead.
Thank you very much. So my first consideration obviously would be
Let me interrupt you one second. Just state your full name and your address.
William Trebel. We live at one-twenty-five White Oak Run. We are on the west the west side of the property, well, adjacent. The driveway would go between our neighbor on the north and us. And it wraps around the east side, east end of our property. So my first consideration obviously is privacy. Where we have people on two sides, the back is always a nice private side, so if something does get built there, it would be nice if I could have some respect as to privacy and leave some of the trees up. To make the driveway, there will be a lot of trees that will have to get cleared. It is all completely wooded right up to the neighbor's property line. My other issue would be drainage. When they built the house to the south of us, they raised the septic system and the foundation to be able to have gravity feed to their septic system because of the way it perked. I told the town, it's going to be a problem. It's going to flood my driveway, and they said, well, there's nothing we can do. So two thousand and two dollars, I spent fifteen thousand dollars to raise and grade my driveway because after the house was built, it flooded every time it rained across my driveway and up to my doorstep. So I would have some issues with the drainage issues on the other side of the property if they built a driveway. I'm not sure what recourse I would have to look at it and okay it or not, but I would ask that a lot of consideration be given to that because we had a lot of problems on the north side, on the south side. And when we bought the property, and I'm a builder contractor for about thirty-five years, the requirements were that there wasn't enough frontage for that to be a lot, and that's one of the reasons we bought this lot was because the neighbors north of us, Michael Bowden, bought the entire property that this used to be part of. And he kept that lot as basically a privacy lot, is what is our understanding. And that there would not be a house there because there's not enough So I'm not quite following how we suddenly don't have enough frontage, and now we do. I'm not quite sure how we're getting the fifty-feet of frontage on there to make it a legal lot. Like I said, I've been a builder for a long time. I know all the ins and outs of building houses, but I don't necessarily know all the ins and outs of engineering and planning in a town. It baffles me sometimes, but so if there is a house that's going to go in there and there's nothing I can do about it, I would ask that maybe we could I could get some information about where the house is going and how it might affect us and how the drainage might affect us. And maybe have some input on that. I'm not quite sure how that works, but those are my questions.
I'll just tell you that I respect all of your points, and with Ben and Jamie here, I think it would be wise at some point in time, if it turns into an act of development, to hear from an abutter that has top of topography information and drainage information that has affected him adversely in the past, that perhaps they're willing to listen to you and have some dialogue. So you see their names that they're here now, and it's public information, Ben Reese and Jamie Bessonette. I would strongly recommend maybe you write the names down and then with a open hand and a handshake, as you see people on the property shake hands and maybe have this conversation, because I think it's a win-win.
That's all I would ask is that if I could at least have some conversation. The houses that went on the lots around us, there was never any conversation, and they really we have floodlights that come in our bedroom twenty-four hours a day. The drainage issue, you know, so I don't want to stop progress. I know the Bowdens could use, would like the money from the lot sale. I just would, you know, a little consideration would be nice.
Sure. I'll say this, and I'll say it in public, and I know I'll be criticized for it, but I don't have a problem with that. I understand what has happened in the past, and I understand that we've probably gotten this far tonight because it is legal, knowing that the zoning enforcement officer, per our planning director, Dan, that it has been seen and discussed. But I promise you that I will look into the legality and further understand the creation of frontage and the ability to create. Because quite frankly, there's going to be a lot of properties in this town where zoning restrictions today, as it relates to frontage, are going to be not necessarily circumnavigated because we're now defining this as a legal path. But there'll be more to be seen, and I think what But there'll be more to be seen. And I think what's important in Mr. Trebel's defense is that abutters that, I'm sorry, people that are about to become abutters should be given the opportunity to understand the nature of one lot that might, might not be built upon then, what could happen in the future. I, I, I understand and I respect wholeheartedly your sentiment. And if this is legal, which it is, my plan is not just to vote on this and move on as if it didn't happen. But I think it's important moving forward that abutters or those that are about to abut such properties need to understand the legal pathways that those properties offer, so that they're not shocked three months or twenty years down the road. So I, I respect your position.
I thank you. It, that's a conversation that I never had twenty-some years ago when they built to the south of us.
It's, it's hard, it's hard to have the conversation when the plan that you saw in two thousand and two, a Mylar that was stamped and recorded here says parcel A is to be considered a non-buildable lot. It, it's hard to take the next step. And, and that's something that, in your defense, I think it's a whole separate part of tonight's meeting, but it's something that needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I thank you so much. Thank you. Does anybody else, uh, as far as the butters and or from the public want to speak on behalf of us? If not, Ben or Jamie, anything further?
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Be, uh, uh, I, I don't mean to, uh, interrupt, uh, Jamie or Ben. Um, or any, any other speakers, but I just wanna, I have one, a follow-up question uh, that I'd like to ask after, uh, abutters and Ben and Jamie's.
I appreciate that. I think I just saw Mr. Michael Bowden. Uh, Mr. Bowden, were you trying to speak or was that just a?
It's, uh, Derek Fernandez trying to speak.
Okay. Hello there, how are you?
Hi, good and yourself?
Name and address if you don't mind.
Sure, uh, Derek Fernandez, uh, one four seven White Oak Run. Uh, one of the, the butters, I believe it's map sixteen dash four, I believe. Um, and also in the room that are here, just can't see him, is, are my parents Maria Fernandez and Jose Fernandez, who are the homeowners. And I'm gonna be speaking on, uh, behalf of myself and my parents.
Appreciate that.
Okay, um, so I can continue?
You can.
Okay, um, yeah, so my name is Derek Fernandez. Uh, we live at one four seven White Oak Run, uh, right next door to the property. Um, my parents and I, uh, strongly disagree with the plan. Um, there is not enough frontage to build a home on this property. Uh, when the property was for sale a few years ago, uh, my mother and father, they went to go speak to Mr. Bowden. Um, and, you know, because we're interested in purchasing the property. Um, basically, it would have been a property for myself. Uh, we were gonna build a house and a garage. Um, but after my father and mother, mostly them, they went to go speak with the town. Uh, they were told numerous times that we couldn't build on the property, because it was not enough frontage. So they decided not to continue and go and try to make a deal with Mr. Bowden. Um, in my, in my opinion, my view, after speaking to many people, um, the way the plan is being presented is, you know, based off of even, I believe her name was Margaret. Um, my view, it's a way of bypassing and getting around the minimum frontage needed to build the property. Um, like Mr. Trouble is saying, um, this lot's been like this since we purchased the property. Back, I believe in oh-five, my father purchased it. Um, we're concerned as well with the drainage. Uh, definitely the privacy that we've had all these years. Uh, I, I can just see all the trees getting knocked down. Like it's happening throughout the town more and more. Um, and again, basically, my parents and I, uh, we strongly disagree with the plan. And, yeah, that's all we would like to say, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Appreciate you representing your parents. Thank you.
Can I ask him a question, please? I just need his address again. What's his address?
One forty-seven White Oak Run, Fernandez family.
Mr. Fernandez, what, how much is your frontage?
Um, I'm not sure, to be honest with you, we'd have to check, but we're in a state lot.
So you have fifty-foot frontage. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman, if I could maybe try to clarify something real quick?
Sure.
So on an, on an A and R plan, the planning board is not allowed to endorse the plan. If it do, if a lot doesn't have the required frontage unless it's labeled as a parcel that's non-buildable. This is a single lot subdivision, but there have been cases where, say, the dev- developer had two hundred feet of frontage times six. So he could have broken off four, five form A lots and had two hundred acres left over. That two hundred acres left over would had to have been labeled as parcel A, non-buildable. He had, he might have plans to do a hundred lot subdivision back there, but on an A and R plan, it has to be labeled as non-buildable. Or else it's not eligible for endorsement by the planning board. So labeling it parcel A is a requirement, or else the planning board at that time would not have been able to have endorsed the plan. So that's why that has to be labeled as parcel A, non-buildable.
Appreciate that, man.
That's, that's why it has to be done. Like I said, you don't see a lot of, of subdivisions now that have a real wide length of frontage. So you don't see those kind of subdivisions I'm talking about as much. But that's how a lot of developers used to begin development. They used to create an A and R plan, be able to break off frontage lots, what they used to call them, so you could sell those to help fund the construction of the subdivision. So you'd see a lot of subdivisions where you might break off three or four frontage lots. And then, like I said, it could be a hundred, two hundred acres left over, still be labeled as parcel A, because all you would leave was enough land for the road layout to get back to the future development. So it's, it, it's, it wasn't a determination of future buildability. It's just in order for an approval not required plan to be endorsed, all lots must have the required frontage or be labeled as an unbuildable lot with a parcel as opposed to a lot.
So I hope. That's a, that's a, that's a very, very helpful clarification.
I have another question, Mr. Chair. Concerning the abutters' question and concern. Uh, maybe we should wait until we hear about the drainage on this lot. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I answer that?
Sure.
We, we're not, we're not necessarily looking for a vote tonight. I believe Mr. Giesser has explained to us that we're gonna need to come back because we don't have the official letter from the Board of Health. And we have a couple of small items to wrap up with the, uh, with the DPW. I do believe between now and the next meeting, we'll have the DPW at a point where they're comfortable with the drainage. And we'll be able to make the change on the name on the plans, uh, for the roadway name. And, um, and possibly even, um, yeah, possi- hopefully we'll have that letter from, from Paul stating that everything's okay. So hopefully we'll be able to get a clean bill of health for the next meeting.
I appreciate that, Jamie. Thank you. So ju- just to reel it back in a little bit, as far as the board. We can talk about a couple of the waivers, right? The turnaround waiver that's before us. And we can talk about the curb waiver, which has been pretty common. And then the drainage is gonna come before us at the next meeting. And then the street trees, quite frankly, I, I, I haven't physically stopped at zero White Oak Run, so I have no idea what it looks like. But knowing that it's only fifty feet, our wishes and some of the tree programs in town are probably gonna be very limited. It's only fifty feet. They're gonna have to clear most of that. Correct?
Uh, yeah, from, from left to right with the fifty feet and width, yes, they're gonna, they're gonna have to clear, um. I'm guessing they're gonna have to clear probably thirty feet of that and width.
So are we looking to, Dan, are we, are we looking to vote on each waiver individually tonight?
Uh, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to vote on any of the waivers tonight and, and because we want to make sure we get the comments from the Board of Health. Um, through statutory regulations, we have to give the Board Health forty-five days to comment. They just had their meeting, as Mr. Bissinette mentioned, right before ours, so they weren't able to get us a letter. Um, I believe we have the comment that they'll eventually want on the plan, but I don't want to make that assumption before getting that a letter. Um, so we don't have to do it. But when it, when it does come time to a vote, it could just be that the vote um, would be to approve the subdivision with the requested waivers, when it gets to that point.
Right.
Mr. Chair, can I comment?
Please.
Regarding the tree line, um, I would challenge the engineer to see how we could on the, on along the property line, um, offer trees as a um, design improvement for that entry. Particularly as there's a lot of vegetation there that has to be removed in order to create this public way. How do we just, instead of just saying you can't do it, or, you know, it's not easy to do? Challenge the engineers to say, to think about, what could we do to mitigate the clearing?
Appreciate that. And Jamie, I think that's, um, I mean, you, you just, you just talked about potentially the need for thirty feet of clearing, correct? I believe you mentioned thirty.
Well, yeah, so the, the roadway's twelve paved with four-foot shoulders, so that gives us a twenty-foot width.
Yep.
And then we're gonna have to catch grade. There'll be some disturbance area beyond that. So, yeah, so I'm, I'm figuring that we're gonna be roughly thirty feet.
All right, so plus or minus, we could save ten on each side or, or mitigate or be creative based on Hillio's request.
Yeah, so what, I'm looking at the grading sheet, and in this case, um, for example, it's gonna be harder for us to catch grade to the north rather than, rather than the south, because of the topography. So it looks like the thirty feet's gonna be, it might be right at the entrance and probably be closer to thirty-five feet to be able to tie into the grades. But as we go, as we go back within the right of way, it seems to be able to narrow up quite a bit.
Understood. Hillio, are you good with that?
Yeah, I think it's just a, um, a good faith effort to mitigate the loss of the vegetation.
Okay, anyone else? Please, Kevin.
Uh, I have a question for Dan. Um, I, thi- this was early in on my tenure, that we, we did a couple of, uh, of subdivisions. And particularly with the plots that were, uh, budding, uh, uh, existing housing. Um, we, we managed to include in the subdivision some rules about, uh, trees that could or could not, uh, be, be cut or at least provide some shielding from, uh, lighting or, or sound and noise. And, uh, I'm, I'm wondering if we, if we couldn't include some verbiage in this subdivision to, uh, to, uh, you know, memorialize what we're talking about and, and hopefully what would happen with the handshake anyway in, in the subdivision agreement.
Yeah, there have been subdivisions, um, through you, Mr. Chairman. There have been subdivisions where, where they put no codisements on the plan. So that's something that could be discussed with the applicant. Uh, that's at the discretion of, if the applicant will accept that and if the board would vote for that, so. But that is definitely something that could be discussed, uh, with the applicants on here, um, and his engineer, so.
I, I just wanted to speak to the gentleman's, uh, the, the abutter, uh, that, uh, had, had some concerns about lights and and asking for some shielding and, uh, uh, bring up a, a way that we, we, we might accomplish that.
Thank you, Kevin. All right.
Hello? No.
Hello.
Hi, this is.
Good evening, Mr. Mr. Bowden. Yeah, your name and address, please.
One nineteen White Oak Run. I'm the abutter to the north and the original owner of the property. I, I just, I don't really have much to say other than, you know, when I, uh, developed the property, I was doing that because, uh, the original owner before me, uh, he, I had lived in this home for forty-one years. And I was originally just looking to get fifty foot beside me. All these lots down this way are a hundred feet or less. I sit back about four hundred feet. So I'll be, I'm the one who's gonna get obstructed by lights and all of that. But, um, I have a need to sell the property. But the property was never intended never to be built on. My son was three or four years old when I bought the property, and SciTech Engineering designed it. So that with what you're talking about with the roadway and all that, that it would be buildable. And we actually brought them back in like two years ago to look at this. They wanted me to give up some of my land and I could, so that I could build two homes there to make it, uh, whatever that requirement is, four acres or whatever. I'd have no intentions of any of that, but never did. Um, but my son, who was, that's the plan to put my son there, but he in the end didn't want to live in the area. He moved off. He's in his thirties now. He lives in Newport, Rhode Island. So I just, I mind, I'm more worried about somebody thinking I had intentions. Nobody ever questioned me about anything. I get that they had plans to look at. But my wife, who's paralyzed and handicapped, is really who handled most of it. And, uh, for Will, I, I wasn't involved. My best friend sold that property for me. So I never really had direct communication with them. And, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Fernandez, I offered them this land. And figuring that their son, uh, maybe they just wanted the privacy of, I had it for forty-one years. I'm not really looking to have somebody beside me, but I need to. So, um, so anyway, I'm just saying that it was never intended not to be built on. It was just planning twenty, thirty years later to build on it, which is basically where we're at. My son's decided he didn't want to build the house there, and so that's where I'm at. And I'll be the one who's worried about the drainage issues and all of that, so I'm hoping.
No. Yeah, we, we, we lost them. Hopefully he'll reconnect, um, just so we can finish his statement. While we're waiting for him to reconnect, uh, as a board, does anybody else have anything they want to contribute to this particular item tonight? And in the absence of that, we are going to continue this regardless, correct? Dan?
That's what I would recommend with the, with the understanding with the applicant and engineer, that that's what we're, we're gonna do.
Sure. Yeah, we, we understand.
I, I would, I would request of the applicant and engineer, just, um, would you be looking for, for a week to, to give yourself time to get the comments back, try to get the clean letter from the engineer? I know it gets tight in two weeks, so.
It does. I, I don't, I don't think in this case that we're gonna need four weeks, Dan, but I, I've been wrong before. Um, I'd like to go for the two weeks, and if we don't have something until next week, then I will, uh, request a, a continuance.
There. Dan, you good with that?
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
There's, there's not, there's not a lot of information that he, that he was missing. I, I, I would like to just have a discussion, if, if possible, at some point, just about the the, the clearing, if that's something that they'd be interested in doing, because it was requested from the board members. But other than that, I don't see any reason why it can't be back to you before, in the next meeting.
Right, right. So, I mean, I, I'm trying to give Mr. Bowden another moment here, um. Fernandez family, are you trying to speak?
Ye- yeah, Mr. Psychopedia, it's Derek again. Um, I'll just confirm my father. Um, so just, just to put it out on public record too, um, they had met with Mr. Bowden, like he said. Um, and they, at the time, had agreed on a number, let's say, like, you know, not a handshake or nothing, but agreed on a number to buy the property if it was buildable. The issue was at the time, like I had stated, my parents multiple times did go to the town to ask questions if this law was buildable, and they always said, um, it was not. So I just wanted to, to state that, just to be on record.
I, 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 I appreciate that, and I don't have a lot of experience compared to some of the other board members. But in all fairness to the town, as the way the lot sat and as the way it was recorded and even until this moment, it's not buildable. And it wasn't buildable. What's necessary is the frontage, so that it becomes buildable. So in all fairness to you, it might have been a matter of fact or maybe an answer not as in-depth as you would have wished for, now that you see what's before you. But by all definitions, it was not buildable in the absence of frontage. And with the creation of frontage, it becomes buildable. So I, I'm with you, but but the reality is before us, I think. Mr. Bowden, I see that you're back. Sorry that you got disconnected.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, I just, that's all I really had to say. I just was trying to make it so they understood. I wasn't trying to mislead anybody from twenty, thirty years ago. I just, nobody ever asked me that question.
No, I, I, I appreciate that, and I, and I just want to clarify, and I'm glad we're clarifying it for the abutters because the, the, the most sensitive people here, subject to this proposal, are the abutters. Um, so, a- and then I'm a little sensitive to the fact that I want to make sure as a board the legality behind the frontage that's being created is the same. Is the same legality that's going to be applied and decided the same way in any future proposals. So that this is not really the decision the board's making in terms of language or legality. It, it's approving something that's already been written, I, I just, I think about tomorrow. And, and I worry about the future in terms of what we represent and what we do, so I, I appreciate everyone's effort on this. Um, and by no means, please don't, please do not take anything that I said earlier. It was not directed to you, it was just. There's a lot happening in town right now, and. The flip side of what's going on before us tonight that we haven't talked about, hundred and forty somewhat thousand square feet, and it doesn't have a house on it. In this town, we need houses, so it's a blessing, but there are a lot of things that are happening right now between zoning. And lot size and number of homes, and it's all extremely sensitive, and I think the more that we each become well-versed in the subject matter. The more we're gonna defend and protect the town, and at the same time, understand anything that's being proposed, so. It was not directed at you, I promise.
Now, I understand that, like I said, I've been here forty-one years, I'm all about, you know, not having, being overrun with homes. And I moved here, we're a dirt road, we were, we had a lot going on now, but they're building another five homes at the other end of the street. And, uh, I, 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 I don't wanna, you know, put too many homes in, but I, you know. If I can possibly do it, and I want it to be legal, I'm not looking to anybody to do anybody any favors, just. Keep with the laws, and I, and I understand about the future, because we don't want any of that either, so, uh. You know, I'm good with it, yeah.
Appreciate it, much appreciated.
I'm his son, sir, sorry about that, I'm in the background, uh, my name's Michael Bowden as well, I live in Newport, Rhode Island, but. You know, originally the plan was, is we bought all the land that was next to us, when I was probably in elementary school back in the day, and we had. Planned to keep a lot that I was gonna build on, but as you know, as my father said, I, I moved to Newport, and, uh, unfortunately, I don't have plans currently to move back, so. You know, to move forward with the plan for the land, that's why we're going this direction.
Understood.
The reason I bought it was, it was Herb Howe who owned the land before me, and him and his wife were very close to us, but. He was at that age, he wanted to get out, and a guy came in, proposed putting eighteen houses in the subdivision there. And that's how I ended up owning this property, because I didn't want eighteen houses, you know what I mean, and, uh. I think, you know, the reality is, I respect the Fernandez and Will, but that house will sit kinda. Somewhat in the middle of them, so there'll be quite a bit of frontage between everybody. And that house will be kinda isolated, so if anybody's gonna get like. Spotlights on him and stuff, I agree with Will about the one that, next home, but that's all legal, two hundred foot frontage, all of that. But this one here is, if anybody's gonna have things shining at me and stuff, it's me. And, uh, Mr. Fernandez, his house faces the opposite direction, and Will's pretty much, much closer to the road. The only thing I wanna make sure we get correct is the drainage, you know, I mean, that's where I, I wanna make sure, cuz. We have on this street, not here, but on the street, we've had issues with drainage before, mostly on the Westport side. But, um, that's my only question, but other than that, I, I just wanna be within the rules and hopefully, uh. Get this approved so that we could put one home there.
Excellent, I, I really thank you for your time, I thank you for your explanation, and in all honesty, on behalf of myself, and I think broad spectrum to town. All these years, thank you for protecting that land.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, appreciate it.
Alright, I believe at this point in time, we are gonna look for a motion to close the public hearing, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong?
Nope, we just wanna make a motion to continue the public hearing, and so.
Sorry.
Uh, motion to continue the public hearing?
Second, okay, was that Helio?
Yes.
Motion, motion made by Kevin Estes to continue the public hearing, seconded by Hill Yarosa, Kevin Estes.
We, we wanna, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we just wanna make sure, we make a motion to continue to a date and time, so we wanna make sure we end the motion, we continue to November third at seven o'clock. Sorry about that.
Motion made to continue the public hearing.
I'll amend my motion to, uh, uh. Until, to postpone and continue until, uh, November third.
Correct, at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
And Helio, we have.
And I'll, I'll second that as well, I'll.
Thank you. Motion made by Kevin Estes to continue the public hearing to November third at seven PM, seconded by Hill Yarosa, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Hill Yarosa?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Nick Psychopatis, yes. Jamie, Ben, and the butters, and Mr. Bowden, thank you, thank you for all chiming in and being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening. Thank you. Alright, brings us to agenda item number two, which is a continued public hearing for eight thirteen State Road. We've seen this before, PSP dash twenty-five dash two, assessors map one sixty-three, lot sixty-three. And, uh, Dan, am I correct, Jamie's still with us for this reason?
Yeah, so we just wanna make a motion, um, ask for a motion to open this public hearing.
Can I have a motion to open the continued public hearing, please?
Don't move. I made that motion, yeah.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion made by Margaret Sweet, seconded by Hill Yarosa, to open the continued public hearing as it relates to eight one three State Road. PSP dash twenty-five dash two, known as assessors map one sixty-three, lot sixty-three. Dan or Jamie, whoever wants to chime in.
Did we get the roll call vote? I'm sorry, did I miss the roll call vote?
No, we didn't.
Because we opened that, sorry. Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Hill Yarosa?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Nick Psychopatis, here.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have a request for a continuance, um, for this, but I asked, um, Mr. Bissonette from Zenith if he could give the board. Um, a, a brief update on what's going on with the projects, it has been continued a few times. Um, so at the request of the chairman, I would ask Mr. Bissonette to give that.
Yeah, update. Please do.
Uh, good evening, Jamie Bissonette with Zenith Consulting again, thank you for, uh, hearing me again tonight, uh, if I may, can I share my screen?
Yep, I made you co-host again, Jamie, there we go.
Thank you. Alright, can you guys see, see my screen?
Mm-hmm.
Looks like dirt?
Yes.
Yeah, alright, so, um, we're working with the DPW, uh, with Paul and the DPW to locate the utilities in front of our site. Um, there's existing drainage and sewer on State Road in front of our site, and we've gotta pick up. Certain, uh, inverts in the structures to make sure that we're avoiding conflicts elevation-wise with proposed water and sewer. Um, we have a couple of structures that are like this, this is one of the, uh, and this is actually a catch basin. With two pipes that are coming into it, and it's mapped out as having a pipe going out of it, down at this lower elevation here. But as you can see, the, the, uh, the catch basin structure is full. Uh, so what we're trying to do, we have, I'm gonna open up the other one as well, this is one of the other ones. Let me zoom out so you get a better view. Uh, this is one of the other structures where we can't see any of the inverts in or out of the structure on State Road. Um, we're trying to get the state to clean these out, and I've actually emailed and asked, uh, Paul Duarte at DPW to help assist us with getting these done. So that we can locate those structures, um, that's the only thing. Right now that's really holding us up on completing the design, so we can get that, uh, Paul. Um, comfortable, I believe, with the design and the utility connections. Um, but that's not the only reason that we've, we've continued, um, there's been a couple of continuance, uh, requests as well, because we've been working on. The, uh, condominium documents, uh, which have been being worked on by, uh, Attorney Salino. Who has sent those over to Mr. Giosa, and I, those are gonna be sent over to town council. And then the last bit was the billboards, which you guys had asked for us to, you know, provide some, uh. Proof, or some kind of documentation that the, the billboards will be coming down. Uh, they've been working on getting a release on those billboards, and we finally do have some, uh. Some stuff in writing back from the billboard company that holds the lease with timeframes and everything, uh, as. On timeframes of when those will come down as well. So, uh, those have been the three items that are really holding us up, I actually think the billboard and the condo documents are gonna be resolved prior to. Me seeing these catch basin and drainage manholes cleaned out, if, um. If push comes to shove, we're gonna see if we can, uh, have our client pay to have these structures cleaned out. So that we can shoot the inverts in, because we've been waiting a while for this, and trying to facilitate it. Um, and now we're trying to reach out to the town and see if the town can help with that. So, that, that's the reason for the requests for continuances up until this point, um, it's not because we're just kicking the project out long-term. Uh, we're just trying to deal with these three issues.
Jamie, much appreciated, any questions? If not, we can entertain a motion to continue.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to, um, read the continuance letter into the record?
Sure.
Um, so we received a letter, uh, dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, Chairman Psychopatis, we respectfully request a continuance from our scheduled meeting with the planning board on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. To the meeting on November third, twenty twenty-five. Should you have any questions regarding this request, please do not hesitate to contact the office, uh, and that's for Zenith, and signed sincerely for Zenith Consultant Engineers. Jamie Bissonette, P E Manager and Senior Engineer. So if the board is okay with that continuance, it would be similar to the last one, um, to make a motion to continue to the. November third meeting at seven PM.
Any questions, if not, we'll, we'll entertain the motion.
Motion to continue to November third.
And seconded by Margaret?
Yep.
Okay, motion made by Hill Yarosa, and seconded by Margaret Sweet to continue. The public hearing regarding eight one three State Road to the November third meeting at seven PM, Hill Yarosa?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Psychopatis, yes. Jamie, thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, have a great night.
At this point in time, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Um, we made a motion to continue, so now just a motion to return to the regular meeting.
Anyone with that motion, please? Motion made by Lori Miller to return to the scheduled October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five Dartmouth Planning Board Meeting. Seconded by, was that Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Seconded by Kevin Estes, Lori Miller?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Hill Yarosa?
Yes.
Nick Psychopatis, yes. Brings us to administrative items, amendment to an approved site plan, sixty-eight Old Fall River Road. Uh, Dan, P A S P dash twenty-five dash two, Dan, this is something that we're simply going to vote to approve amendment?
Um, yes, this is an application for an amendment to, uh. Certificate of Action that for a site plan review that was originally approved by the planning board in November eighteenth of twenty twenty-four. Um, this, as you said, was PSP twenty-five dash two, sixty-eight Old Fall River Road, also listed as map sixty-eight lot twenty-two. Um, this was an application for First Citizens Federal Credit Union Office Building. Um, the applicant has made, um, a number of minor changes, they were reviewed by planning staff. Uh, the engineer had. Um, responded to all of our comments, submitted revised plans in a timely manner, so those revised plans are what you, what the board received in their packet. Um, I believe they have a representative here, um, so I think it would be appropriate if they wanted to just go through the. The, um, changes that were done, and if they have any questions, I can go through it with them, or if the board has any questions at that point.
Anyone?
Uh, hi, yes, Sam Imeli with J C Engineering.
Good evening, Sam.
Good evening, um, if I may, I can share my screen and just kinda briefly go through the changes and.
DC TV, does he need help? DC TV? Sam, are you having trouble using the share button?
Um, I'm pressing it now, host isn't allowing sharing.
Yeah, they made someone prior to your co-host, let me just see, uh.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll just send them a quick chat.
While, while we're waiting, Mr. Chairman, just as a follow-up, they, they did send this out to, um, engineering as well over at DPW. Um, we got a clean response back from them, so no concerns from the DPW or any other departments.
Thank you. There we go.
Alright, are you all able to see my screen here?
Yes.
Alright, so, first off, um, the proposed building, we had a reduction in size approximately three thousand square feet. The west, south, and east side all remain in the same location, while the northern side, closest to the road. Um, got setback of approximately twenty feet further from, um, Old Fall River Road. Um, and then, of course, all, um, walkways, landscaping, whatnot, were shifted accordingly. Um, moving on, we originally had handicap spaces kinda centrally located in this first row of parking. We shifted that over to the west, closest to the building's main entrance. Um, and in that location, we have sort of a flush transition from the parking lot to the walkways, so we provided bollards in front of the parking spaces there. Um, moving over, we had solar panel canopies over these sort of four perpendicular rows of parking here. The footprint of those canopies has also reduced. Um, and the support columns for the canopies are now located within the parking area, so to accommodate that, we've. Created sort of multiple parking islands that'll serve as grounding locations for the support columns. Um, and also with that reduction, we've exposed a lot of, um, this western island here, so we've, we're able to provide additional plantings in this area over here. Uh, the other two southern islands there will be, um, we'll use crushed stone to fill those, as the, um, the shadowing from the canopies. Will still affect those areas. Um, moving over here to the west, we, um, modified the retaining wall that sort of wraps around the parking facility. Um, and that's just going to allow access for future maintenance, as we have, um, the well for the property located in the back of the lot. Um, we have a small gravel path that will connect the parking facility to that area, and have incorporated a gate in that fence, um. To be used for access. Um, and, uh, lastly, we just shifted a few, um, utilities and associated equipment. Um, throughout the site, but with that, I think that kinda summarizes most of the changes there, and I'd be, uh, happy to elaborate or. Answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Sam. Board members, any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Lori.
Um, could you give me, excuse me, could you give me the reason for the walkway being removed? And will be replaced with crushed stone, stone?
Um, yeah, so originally, you know, we kinda had sort of a, a entrance, the main entrance way onto the. Um, walkways sort of right down the center, but as we shifted everything in the main walkway sort of moved west. We didn't really see a need for sort of the, um, the walkway that ran down the middle of the parking spaces.
Okay. It's just that you're gonna, the crushed stone's gonna go everywhere, but that's okay.
Yeah, I can take that one a little bit more, Sam, this is Chris Howard from First Citizens, if the chair will allow.
Please proceed, Chris, good evening.
Good evening, yeah, so the way the solar structure is gonna be, uh, set up, it's gonna be a V. And so, uh, when we have either snow or rain drainage, it's gonna drain down in the middle, so we want the crushed stone there to provide additional drainage. And we don't want any of our team members or employees walking down there, so, kind of protect them a little bit better, and that was the thinking with the crushed stone.
That explains it better, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Chris, anyone else? If not, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, we'll look for a vote to approve the amendment?
Correct.
There are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, as amended?
I'll second.
Motion made by Kevin Estes, seconded by Hill Yarosa, to approve the amendment proposed to approve site plan PS. A S P dash twenty-five dash two, known as sixty-eight Old Fall River Road, assessors map sixty-eight lot twenty-two, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Hill Yarosa?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Nick Psychopatis, yes. Thank you, gentlemen, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome to town.
Thank you.
All right. We're all still connected, right? Yeah, there we go. Sorry about that. So ongoing discussion, Dartmouth Future zoning. Dan, you want to start or are we picking up where we left off or?
This is just an item that the board had discussed to keep on if there were any items that came up before our uh mid-December workshop. Um so we wanted to keep this on because it is a little bit of ways. So if any board members had anything to add prior to that hearing, so we can research, look into whatever needs to be done, any items for discussion in that in those regards. So I would present it to the board if they have anything they want to add.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody at this point in time? I know our goal is to get in and apply some colors. We previously said that we each want to, in our own minds, put down via a color where the B, the overlay may be as well as any other ideas we may have. So um I I have not been transparent. I have not done that yet. I'll be visiting Dan and Ross on Friday morning to do so. So I don't know if anybody has, but if not, let let's just keep our eye on the prize of putting our thoughts on on that paper and color and trying to see it come to life. Um I ju- I want to share, I want to share one thing. It it doesn't, it doesn't fit here, but we've become very fixated with the things we do know. And I I guess I'll just get to the point. We've become number driven. We know we need housing. Affordable is a key. It's a buzzword. Seven point one eight percent is where we're at. Ten percent is where we need to be so that we don't feel pressure from the state and people going to the state level and bringing before us things that we don't want to see in town. We just gotta have a little bit of an open mind that between seven point one eight and ten percent, which is a big gap. Physically, not numerically, physically, it's a tremendous gap that we have to make and we're gonna have to make some decisions in town that don't always focus on the affordable number. Because the decision we're making ultimately might be the lesser of two evils. And we're making that decision in the better good for the town. Even though we as the board at that point point in time are not making a meaningful impact on the seven point one eight. So there there are some things in the next three to six months that might challenge that mindset. And I'm just asking us to think big picture and maybe reflect and remember what was before us before versus what's before us in the future and not always get stuck on the seven point one eight. Because for the first time in a long time, we as a board and many of our residents and friends and families realize this, the pressure that the state can put on us and impose a project. So I guess what I'm really saying is, open mind. We are a board that cares about affordable housing. We're aware of the number. We know what the goal is. We also know the strength of the state, of the strength of the state, if we're not at that ten percent. And that there might be some projects before us that not meet, that not meet or allocate enough to the affordable sector, but it's still a viable project and a project that's in for the town's perspective, from the town's perspective, a good project. So just planting the seed, we gotta be open-minded in the next three to six months and not so much focused on just the number. Anyone else with zoning stuff? Dan, do you have um? Are there any updates that you can share about Hathaway Road in any way?
I have not seen anything other than Mass Housing gave their their letter of recommendation. That's the last information I've received on that one.
Okay.
Did they give the recommendation for any of the other ones?
That that are already in place? In the comprehensive permit? Yeah, they've always, that's always the first step to get the mass housing letter.
So they've given it for Hathaway Road. Have they given it for, what is it, Old Westport Road?
Yes, that was the first one and Hawthorne and now Hathaway. But we have not. We, meaning the town of Dartmouth, have not received a comprehensive permit application for Hathaway. To the best of my knowledge, as of today.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right, we've had a pretty lengthy meeting so far over a few items. So if we don't have much to share here, we don't, we don't have to drag our feet. We can move on. Um Dan, can you just share one more time is, because I don't have that note in front of me. Did we pick December? Mid-December for that next workshop?
Yes, um the fifteenth, I believe.
Thought so. All right, that's fine. So December fifteenth, we've got plenty of time, but if we can get in there next week or so, it's gonna help us starting. Uh brings us to number three, minutes.
If the board is okay with the minutes as they were submitted in the packet, I would just recommend a motion to approve and file.
Motion to approve and file?
Second.
Motion made by Kevin Estes, seconded by Lori Miller to um approve and file the minutes of the October sixth, two thousand and twenty five meeting. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Hilio Rosa?
Yes.
Nick Psychopatis, yes. Correspondence, Town of Westport?
It's just one notification as in a butter for a project. Um as usual on those, just to make a motion to acknowledge and file.
I have a motion.
If there's no questions.
Motion to acknowledge and file?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Kevin Estes, seconded by Hilio Rosa to acknowledge and file correspondence, in this case from the Town of Westport. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Hilio Rosa?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Nick Psychopatis, yes. Brings us to number five. For your information, old business, new business, incoming Z B A applications, four one one Font's Corner Road. I'll let Dan talk on that.
Yes, this was um an application I received to comment on. Um I included the the plan in the packet in case the board wanted me to ask anything specifically. Uh my normal comment would just be that if if the variance is approved, that's the site plan review will be required. This is a use variance. They are proposing a fueling station with convenience store and food service slash drive-through. Um for those that are on the board, they'll remember this was the contemplated Audi site at the at the Rose Motor Site on Font's Corner Road. Um so this is a new application with a new um prospective use. Um the gas station and convenience store, that could have been something that could have been done under a special permit. It was something the board had done a few years back on the corner of Ventura Drive. But with the drive-through, that's not allowed under the special permit procedure. So that's why they need a use variance for um the three-part use, proposed use of the site. So if the board has anything else, I'd be glad to add it. Other than that, like I said, that would just give my standard response for for this application.
Anyone? If not, we'll let Dan respond accordingly. All right. Moving, Dan, you'll take care of that, right?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So uh zoning board of appeals, decisions, and legal ads?
Nothing new.
Subcommittee reports. Anybody have a subcommittee report? All right. I do not have much of a planner's report. Um quite frankly, we'll move on from the planner's report. I I don't know, is there a lot of subcommittee activity happening? Or Dan, do you know anything of subcommittees at this point in time? Like?
I I I don't hear anything. It's a lot of the stuff is with the the long-range capital. That's that's the one I hear the most, which for whatever reason, went unincluded on those. Um I believe there's a CERPEN meeting. Um Kevin, if you correct me later this week, correct?
Uh yes, yes.
Uh one thing I was gonna mention, the planner's report, um there's a tentative date for the end of the month scheduled for the Housing Production Plan Committee. Um so those that are on that, hopefully you'll see something um or request for that meeting. I think they were trying to schedule it for the thirtieth. Um so as soon as I hear anything, I will pass it along as well.
Uh Mr. Chair, um the community preservation did have a meeting, but we couldn't have a quorum, so we all went home. Okay? So that's why I have nothing to report.
Okay, appreciate that. Moving on, uh master plan implementation report and planning department updates. Dan, anything matter?
Just status quo on that. Those are things we're working on for housing and land use as part of our ongoing workshops.
Right. Chairperson's report uh brings me back to where I was a few minutes ago. I I don't have much to add. Um Has anybody been in yet to work with the maps and or proposed forty B? Have any of us been there yet or no?
I have.
You have?
Yeah, I did. I did.
Okay, so both. Excellent.
I went in and did a like a a review a couple of weeks ago, just kind of, it wasn't anything specific, but
Right.
I was just some general looking across the plans and what's in the zones and whatnot.
Okay. All right, so realistically, we we can probably, I'll get there this week. I'll get there on Friday, as mentioned. Um Hilio, hopefully, plus or minus between now and the next meeting, if you can get there, this might become something that we can discuss uh at towards the tail end of our next meeting. Just start discussing what we're seeing and what we're working on on that map.
Just to chairman, if I could just mention to okay, I was just gonna say, if 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 you need to go a little earlier, I I get in usually earlier than most, but if if it works earlier in the morning, I can I can plan on meeting with you early as well if that works better for your schedule.
I'm up early, but if you're trying to get the town to pay overtime because of my schedule, you got the wrong guy.
I I am not entitled to overtime, just just so you know. So it's it's all for 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 my love of working with you.
I appreciate it. I we all, the town appreciates you. We appreciate you. Much appreciated, so. Uh no, that's fine. Great meeting, guys. I know we spent a lot of time early on. It was a sensitive subject. Um obviously for the butters and the few others that were on that. But at this point in time, if we have nothing further.
Mr. Chair, um just a question, a question for Dan. Um are you still missing any signatures on my ours?
No.
And uh one more question for the rest of the board or or Dan. Uh has anybody gone to any of the online meetings for uh uh the state accepting public comment on the uh the the new energy citing bylaws that are proposed?
No, I forgot off about it, Kevin.
On that a little bit?
I'm sorry?
I I have not, but can you just expand briefly on on what you just said?
Okay, so the state is is uh, they they've put out a a uh uh I guess a a herring, if you will, of of uh energy citing bylaws uh that would allow uh I I guess if you want to draw a a comparison, almost uh if you have a solar or wind farm that you want to put in uh i- as long as you stay within the requirements of of uh the state bylaw, then uh it's kind of, you know, the the town doesn't have much to say about it. Uh it's almost feeling a little forty B-ish, like, hey, you know, these are our regulations and is they comply with ours, so we're gonna let this guy do it, you know, in your town. Um so this is our chance to uh pipe up. And there were a number of towns that uh that were on this uh um uh Zoom meeting that we had. And uh, you know, a lot of people just uh said the same thing, you know, uh trying to to defend and protect their natural assets. Uh the town, uh including a lot of people were concerned about effects of uh of these uh these different kinds of energy citing approvals being placed in plots that are in zone three, two, and one uh aquifer overlay districts. Uh so I I just uh, I thought it would, I I watched it and it was uh interesting only from the standpoint that you got to hear what other towns have to say. Some of the towns that uh were were on the call have already gone through. Uh one town went through five of these projects already. Um so they had a good bit of experience. And uh there's a lot of problems that you can run into uh that they brought up. And um it was uh it 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 was valuable just to hear what other towns were doing. The state in these uh, the these Zoom meetings, they have uh no need to respond and will not respond. Uh they will not comment. Uh it won't be any kind of a debate. It's just uh an opportunity to be heard. Um I don't know if it's an opportunity to be listened to or not, but it was uh an opportunity to be heard. Uh so that the main takeaway that I got from it was uh some of the concerns that uh other towns have. You know, we have. Uh but also just hearing kind of some of the towns that have already gone through it. Uh that that they might be good towns to reach out to. And I I I kept a a short list of the towns that have already had a lot of action on this front.
What summers that one of them by any chance? I didn't want to put you on the spot.
Let's see. Uh yeah, you put me on the spot, but I did not, I had the list.
Oh, I I I can check in with you later.
Uh Oxbridge, Shrewsbury. Uh those were the two that sounded like they had some uh some some good comments and and Oxbridge had a lot of experience.
Just just as a follow-up on that, I I forwarded that information to the building inspector, the the fire chiefs, um the director of public works, because that's all information that could be applicable to them as well through the permitting process. Um because they might have concerns with how that permitting is gonna take place and the conservation agent, sorry.
Got it.
Kevin, much appreciated. And uh I I'm just curious, th- these are in draft form or these are existing regs?
The these are not existing regs. There is a proposed bylaw, but they're asking for comments.
Understood. Okay.
Um and if you recall, CERPEN rang the bell on this uh and and I think that the meeting was on Wednesday and we had to get our draft uh comments back to uh uh the select board by Friday. And I I I said, this isn't gonna happen, guys. Like, we're finding out about this today.
Right.
And uh so they've they've uh flexed a little bit and given some additional opportunities for input from the towns.
Okay.
So they've got these Zoom calls and and I happened to jump on one.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Anybody else before we um perform number six? If not, it's always a pleasure and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Kevin Estes, seconded by Hilio Rosa to adjourn tonight's meeting. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Hilio Rosa?
Yeah.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Nick Psychopatis, yes. Appreciate everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you and good night, Dan. Thank you as always.
Thank you, guys.